Putting to my phone here at seven o'clock. It is Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And this is a meeting of the West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals. On the, on the agenda, we have, do we want to do minutes now, or you want to, you want to do those after the hearing? They might be quick.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not.
All right, let's do them quickly. Um, let's see. So first, we have the minutes of, it's April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
If you have, if you don't have any, um, any changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as, as written.
Okay. I have no amendments. Anybody else?
No.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Is John on there?
I don't see him on there yet.
Do you want to wait?
We can, we can, he can join us.
Okay, all right.
Um, so we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, this is technically a hybrid meeting, so let's do a voice vote, just to be on the same.
Okay, that's fine. Yes.
Your vote, Nate?
Yes.
Nate? My vote's a yes as well. Four zero, Toby. So the, the minutes of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five are approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May twentieth, twenty twenty-five as written, if there's no corrections.
Okay.
Or edits.
Any corrections?
No.
Hearing none? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second?
Yes.
Voice vote, that's a yes?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a yes as well. Again, four zero, Toby. The, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five minutes are approved, four zero. And maybe I should confirm that. Can, can folks online hear us okay? Excellent, beautiful. Thank you for that. All right, so, moving on.
Can I make them?
Yes.
I, on the next thing that's on our, thing about the organization, I think we should postpone this until after this hearing
Yep.
has concluded, because I like the way that the board is set up right now.
Yep.
Unless any of the other board members have any objections. You and I have discussed this in the past, and so I'd like to leave the board the way it is right now until after this hearing.
Yeah, we can put that, put the discussion off, like you said, until after, after tonight's hearing.
Well, I just wanted to, because it's on the agenda, I just want to make sure that.
Until everything is done.
Right, if that's okay with the rest of you, unless anybody has any objections.
We can talk through that.
Okay. You're okay with that?
Um, yeah, so, I, I, I'll have one or two maybe brief things to say once we're done with the continued hearing.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so moving on then, we will continue the public hearing for, or by Branded Realty Group, three LLC, for comprehensive permit, two thirty-five, two forty-five.
And I do have a question?
Yep, and two forty-nine West Boylston Street and twenty-seven Pierce Street. Um, yeah, go ahead with your question.
Okay, so we did get a response, I guess, from the building inspector about some retaining walls, Patrick? Okay, all right. So just bear with me, because sometimes I'm a little bit slow on things. Okay. So I guess there was a question about the retaining walls, do they require the minimum yard setback? And I guess he wrote back and said that there's no, not considered structures, no setbacks are required. But there was a second question, is there a height at which a wall is considered a structure and subject to the setback requirement? But I didn't see any kind of a, an answer. Does that, that the walls are not considered structures or no setbacks, does that answer both questions, or is there something else that I should know?
Through the chair, I believe that answered both questions.
Okay.
Retaining walls under the zoning bylaw are not considered structures and not subject to the setback.
And, and what about the height?
He just said retaining walls are not.
Okay.
Structures.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, because I saw two questions, but when I'm looking at the answer that, that buildings, I only see that there's no setback required, so I didn't see anything about us, about the height requirement. And I didn't know if that answered both questions, but you just did.
Again, Mr. Chair, I believe that answers both questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
For the record, I'm Patrick Healy from Thompson-Liston Associates.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Like, we didn't know that.
Just for the record, just for the record. Um, so thank you, everyone, for, for joining us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Branca, Mr. Healy, for joining us tonight.
Can I interrupt you? Where is Mr. Amico tonight?
Uh, so he emailed, we'll, we'll get into that, but he's not planning on attending tonight.
Even not on this?
Not, so he's already opined on, on what we're going to talk, but we'll get to that.
All right, thank you.
Um, so I think where we left it was, uh, there was a, I think several, I think three or four things by my count that we had left sort of to this, uh, to this meeting that we wanted to sort of get accomplished, or at least progress towards completion tonight. Um, so several of those things, uh, as I recall, were sort of, we wanted to revisit the, the fee waiver issue that we had discussed previously. We wanted to discuss, or at least, um, continue to be aware of, um, the waivers that are being requested along with this, uh, comprehensive permit. And then also, um, earlier today, uh, we received sort of, um, an advanced draft, um, of sort of, um, conditions for approval, uh, for the comprehensive permit. So, I, and I fully appreciate that, um, this was literally just sent out to, to the applicant earlier today, so I'm sure you haven't had a time, time to go through it in, in, in great detail. So I'm certainly in favor of, of, uh, giving you, you know, whatever time you feel you need, uh, to, to do that review. Um, whether you're doing that yourself, or you, you want to send that to your attorneys, however you want to do that is obviously your business. But we, we can talk, certainly talk more about that tonight. Uh, but then also, there, I have some procedural things that I'd like to maybe talk through, um, with Judy and, and the, um, the board, as well as the, the applicant here, just to make sure that we all continue to be on the same page. Uh, but before I sort of turn the floor over, to Mr. Branca or Mr. Healy, just to see what, if any, updates you may have tonight for us. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we move, move forward?
Not right now.
Nope. Okay, excellent. So with that then, I'll, I'll hand over the, the floor to the two of you, if you have any updates or anything you'd like to add at this point.
Sure, this is Robert Branca for the record, manager of Branded Realty Group Three. Um, we had just read through, we're just discussing it. Um, a lot of it, I think, as Ms. Barrett indicated, is going to be stuff that you'll see in most of these.
Yeah.
And a lot of it are things we have to do anyway.
Right.
That's right.
File things with DPW director, with all the various departments, giving the building inspector copies of all, you know, final plans, things like that. None of it is anything that's surprising, and I know VHB, who did the peer review, submitted comments to this memorandum also in writing, and those were acceptable to us. They weren't, none, none of it was unexpected.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we generally are, except, you know, this is generally an acceptable, um, list of conditions.
Okay.
In, in the approval, obviously the approval is up to you, the wording in the approval, but the approval doesn't raise any alarm bells for us.
Okay, good. Excellent, thank you.
Unless Patrick has, again, we had, only had a brief.
Yeah, of course, of course.
No, actually, uh, Rob, I did have a chance to look through it today. I do have some, I think, constructive comments to make when it's appropriate, Mr. Chair, just some fine tuning of language that's specific to West Boylston.
Okay.
Into the.
Right.
Okay. I mean, does it make, so just, just to that point then, does it make sense? Um, is it something which we might be able to move the ball by talking about that stuff here tonight? Or i- is it better to sort of, I don't know, get a, a draft with track changes back and forth between yourself and Judy?
I don't think that's necessary. I think this is all West Boylston stuff, which is you're the final arbiter of all that.
Okay.
To this board.
Okay.
Right. As I said, Mr. Chair, they're pretty minor in nature, so.
Okay, yeah, so if, if, if you want to tick, tick through those, if you're, uh, able to do that, that's.
Is that okay with you, Judy? I don't want to steal your thunder here.
No, it's fine. I have a feeling you probably caught some things that I caught at about four o'clock this afternoon, um, which were silly, so I'm fine. By all means, go ahead and, and discuss it, and I'm happy to make any corrections that need to be made.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Okay. So there was, um, a condition that the project show that it come, that it has submitted for review under the Mass Endangered Species Act and received approval. I'd like to add to that, or is not jurisdictional?
Right.
And the same with the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission.
Can I ask what page?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Page six, uh, at the bottom, number six and number seven.
Page six, you said?
Page six, yes.
In which one?
Uh, number six.
Number six.
Or, so I suggest you add a statement, or is not jurisdictional, or documentation that it's not jurisdictional. And the same with number seven, for the requirement to submit the order of conditions from conservation. So I did meet with the Conservation Commission a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
To review the project in general, and I think we're all in agreement that it's not jurisdictional.
Okay.
They wanted to know what the project was, how we're handling stormwater and erosion control and things, things of that nature.
Okay.
Yep.
But we don't have to make a filing, an official filing, a notice of intent with the commission.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, does that sound reasonable to you, Judy?
Yep.
Okay, great. Question from the board?
We were on page six of this.
Page six, number, paragraph six and seven. Okay.
So if we could move on to page seven. Number ten, um, F. So you did have the sewer system capacity analysis done by a peer consultant.
Yep.
So if we could strike the, the words in sewer, we know there are still issues to address with the water, uh, district.
Yep, thank you.
So just final water system capacity analysis, okay.
Yep.
Yes, sir. And then, um, if we could move on to page eight.
Yep.
C two, number four. And Judy, this occurs in a couple of places, so maybe it's something you could do a search and replace.
Sure.
But there, there's a local water district that's not part of the town, so.
Oh, that's right.
I'd like to add DPW director and West Boylston Water District manager.
Thank you.
And it's like three or four places that that shows.
Yep. And I'll do a search and replace, thank you. Or search and add, I guess.
So that was DPW director, and then you.
And West Boylston Water District Manager.
Yep.
It's a technicality, but it's two separate.
No, it's, you're absolutely right.
Fees and approvals and so forth, yeah.
Okay.
And you said that this is in several different places?
Yeah.
In the conditions, yes. So it was either.
Yeah.
Permits or fees or peer reviews or so forth, all related to the same thing.
Right.
The DPW director for the sewer and the West Boylston Water District Manager for the.
Yeah.
Water components.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, if we could move on to page twelve.
Page twelve.
Number, uh, D six, about halfway down the page.
D six, you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
On the last sentence, it says, "All off-site utility work shall be coordinated and approved by the building inspector." I'm not sure we have any, so if we could just add, add if any.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, don't we have, don't we have a noise ordinance for constructions where only, it's only till five o'clock, till five o'clock and not seven P.M.?
That's in, in here, I believe it's referenced in.
It says seven to seven in here.
Yeah, I had gotten that, those, that times from Wayne, um, but I did not have a chance to check and see if the town had different requirements, so I figured we would talk about it tonight.
So, seven to seven, right. I thought, I thought it was only seven to five.
So I do remember a timed window, but that was in the context of, as I recall, like, a subdivision development?
When we did the, when we did the forty B project up at North Main Street, we only allowed them to work till five o'clock, five o'clock at night.
What are we checking on the, for comprehensive permit for nine?
The, uh.
Yeah. And I know that, because people, especially on Saturdays, people complained on Saturdays, especially like during the summer, because they didn't want, you know, they were having like outdoors, they didn't want all that noise and stuff. Were you on the, you were on, were you on the, were you on the board then? When we did, when we did North, North Main Street?
Only on the tail end of it.
Were you, you weren't?
No, I think I was an associate.
Oh, okay. Cause I know we had, we had some problems with, with the construction time. I think it was Monday through, Monday through Friday from seven to five, and Saturday it was like seven to one or two or something, because people wanted to be able to enjoy, like.
Due to the area, there, there are a little bit of area, different areas.
That's what I'm wondering, if it was a neighbor complaint that led to it.
But then you got, but now you have all these people behind on Pierce Street.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, we have to accommodate, you know, the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to cause any problems, I'm just asking a question. Please bear with me. We're listening.
So let me, let me ask this, Judy, and, um, you can also certainly feel free to opine. Is that fairly standard in these kinds of things that you see, where it's seven A.M. to seven P.M., where work can be done for these kinds of projects?
Yeah, that, I mean, that came, that was one of the conditions that, um, Wayne had suggested.
Yep.
And when I saw it, it didn't set off any red flags for me. I mean, I think it's pretty standard.
Okay.
And then there's interior work too, like, once the shell's complete.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm not sure that would apply to it.
Yeah, yeah, because you're right, in, in this sentence, it's just talking about noise, so that wouldn't necessarily generate noise.
The painters don't make that.
Right, right.
Yeah, strictly a noise and disturbance issue, it's, you know, you've sort of got to balance neighborhood interest versus, how long do you want to extend this?
Comfortable, let's take a look at the ninety-four North Main Street.
Take a look at that.
That's the one, yes. I don't see it in the town.
And I don't know, I don't know who we, who would we double check with, with that?
It's there, we have the comprehensive permit.
Okay, okay.
Toby has the comprehensive permit.
Okay.
We can double check and then we can mirror it.
Yeah, so, so let me ask the applicant, then, do you have comments?
Cause I'm almost positive that, that Saturdays, that they didn't work till seven o'clock at night up there in North Main Street. I'm almost positive that that didn't happen, because the people, first of all, the people are up in arms to begin with with the project. So we had to do, we had, as a board, we had to try to accommodate different things.
And so I'm, I'm, I'm also wondering, I'm also sensitive to the fact that, I certainly agree, that's a valid concern.
Okay.
It may be a different concern than what we were dealing with at North Main Street, what we're dealing with here. But I'm also considering the fact that, you know, if we were to say change this to seven to five and, and cut back Saturday hours to half, you know, to only five or six hours as opposed to, you know, another full day, I'm wondering how much that's gonna, you know, increase the total amount of time that there's construction going on, which is another irritating factor, I, I would argue, as a neighbor, not just the noise, but is it going on for a year or is it going on for eighteen months? Sort of the quicker you can get it done, maybe the better.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you're just.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, we don't want a, a lot of noise.
Absolutely.
People are, uh, uh, close by.
Absolutely, yeah, there, there's residences next door, so I definitely want to be, and across the street from there on Pierce, so I want to be sensitive to that. But do you have any comments?
You took the words right out of my mouth in terms of getting the project done, when you get specific subs on site.
Yeah.
It's hard to keep them on site. Um, and if they, yeah, and if they don't have, okay, I need a day's work to send my people there, or I'm going to send them somewhere else. So now you're waiting for them and the sub behind them needs them.
Yeah.
And if they were going to work seven to seven on a particular day, light to light typically is what they'll say. Um, that's been our experience anyway, is they'll work light to light, and then, especially if they're not local. So that's, whatever the local ordinance is, I'd say, keep that applied, because we don't really have direct residential abutters. It's, it's all commercial, and the Pierce Street residences are across the street.
Right.
The other residences are further north on Pierce, separated again by several commercial, several acres of commercial.
Again, you know. Mr. Chair, what, what does the zoning bylaw say? Does the zoning bylaw have limits on, um, construction hours?
There is something, yes, there is something.
Yeah, we would have to comply with that anyway.
Yes, there is a certain bylaw, but I, I don't want to say seven to seven or seven to five, and I don't want to make that, you know.
Yeah, the, uh, my recollection is there may be something in sort of the subdivision bylaw, which this really doesn't apply to, but not sort of the general zoning bylaw. That's my recollection, but ma- maybe let me do a little bit of homework.
For this ninety-four North Main Street, we have gone through extensively.
Yes.
And I do remember very well, I was on the ninety-four North Main Street.
Yeah.
And I do remember very well, there is a, a condition, what, not only that project, even the planning board.
Right.
So many site plan and other things, you know, we do have a condition on that. It's not very, uh, you know, we don't limit like, you know, what, you can only work half a day or something, it's, it's in the bylaw.
It's not an unreasonable.
It's not an unreasonable, uh, thing to put it in.
Yeah, one, one thing I would note, and you can verify this with, with Ms. Barrett, is this won't overrule a town law. This is something issued by the zoning board, the, the town law will govern.
It's a fair point.
No matter what this says.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, we, the board is very reasonable, at the same time, you know, we do need to think of the, you know, you have seen it.
Yeah, we have a business across the street, it's our food.
There is a good option there.
Yeah.
And I, I don't want to, you know, say something and I don't want to be, they will be calling me, you know, Raj, what, what did you do? So that's, I don't want.
But I, I, I think that, that is actually a, a really good point, is, so this, this wouldn't extend the amount of time that they're able to work on site beyond what, what zoning or whatever already sort of dictates.
Exactly.
So this, this isn't going to be a, an extension by any stretch, it's not going to function in that way. It's sort of whatever it would be for, for any other project, I think. It's just not, you know, here, not necessarily expressly stated, as it would be in some other places. But still, we can check the, the North Main Street.
Yeah, North Main Street, we do have it, there is a thing. And also in each and every, say, site plan reviews and other things.
Yeah, I think that's.
But I also think for, I, I don't know what that time is, but I think we can, we don't have to adhere directly to that either. Just check it, and then come up with a answer from that point.
I, I think that's right, yeah.
It is.
It is, each, each one of those is dealing with a particular situation, which is different from this one.
Right, and, and, I mean, you've heard all the public comments, um, none of them revolved around that.
I think that's right. I don't remember.
Yeah, but, but that, that, we didn't go to that far. So when we go that far, you will hear that comment.
No, and I think that's fine, Raj, but I think we look at that and then we make a decision from, we come back to that. We don't have to follow exactly what that says.
Think of this, even the Schreiner, Schreiner, how much opposition we got.
Yeah.
You know, even the pine craft, how much opposition we got. So even the power planning board, we got a lot of opposition, you know. They say, you know, it's a lot, lot of noise coming in, Saturday, Westland's a, for that matter.
All right, so we can do a little bit of homework there.
We'll take a look and we'll bring it.
And come back.
Yeah, and, and one other thing I would note is, um, the most disruptive thing is going to be site work, right?
Yeah.
And then erecting the frame.
Yep.
Um, because there'll be a crane there, and that makes noise. But once that happens, I mean, deliveries of materials to the site, those generally are the noisy things, and that's front-loaded, and that's all in the beginning.
Okay.
But most of those deliveries will be in the mornings, right?
It depends on where the stuff is coming from.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's one other thing, you know, so when you do that, uh, the deliveries comes in, or when you start your, uh, all the heavy equipments before seven o'clock, so you will, we will get some complaints.
Yeah, really.
We wouldn't be doing it before.
Patrick knows it.
Yes.
Yep, he's been setting out this.
So if it says seven A.M., they don't want you starting the equipment.
Before the seven A.M.
Doesn't the engine run at six fifteen?
Six fifteen, six fifty. People are sleeping, you, you know, I know that, you know, we are, you know, you want to do the project, but at the same time, we had to be mindful of people sleeping there.
Of course, yeah, not our first rodeo, yeah.
Raj will definitely get a phone call as a select.
Yeah, exactly. And also.
Not as a ZBA member, but as a select.
This is next door, from his next door neighbor?
No.
His phone.
You know, we have to, we have to be mindful of it, that's all.
It's, it's a fair point, it's a fair point. All right, so.
What else?
So that covers D six. We do have one thing, let me just make a note so that I totally drop the ball here.
Is there anything on the holidays?
Yes.
Yes, it says it, yeah.
Says federal holidays.
No Sundays or federal holidays.
It does, yeah. Yep.
Don't try to sneak those in.
It's Christmas, that's what I want to be doing.
It is interesting, though, that the first part of the sentence is specifically talking about noise as opposed to work.
Right.
And the second part of the sentence is talking about work of any kind.
Right.
On Sundays and federal holidays.
Yep.
Right. So no work on Sundays and.
Just, just out of curiosity, once this comprehensive permit is approved, right, how soon do you think that you would start this project?
Well, we're going to be managing the site work ourselves.
Okay.
So we would get the demolition permits, obviously would be the first thing, which we've already done a lot of legwork on that. Uh, everybody knows that's coming, we kind of lined all that up, get the shut offs, all that's already been done. Uh, the fire department's been doing fire drills there, so like, a lot of the stuff's burned already. So we would take care of that. We've got some material on site, we'd probably crush, because we need to bring the grade up.
Right.
Um, obviously that's going to be between those hours, because that's loud.
Yeah.
And then start trenching for utilities, um, and then get a foundation in. Then we'd probably bring in, um, a framing company, that's where a crane would come in. Uh, because we'd do that building C first, the large building first, get that done, or as close to done as possible before starting on the others, but by then, all the site work will have been done on those.
So you're hoping that all your site work will be done before winter?
Hoping and planning are two different things.
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
I, I don't know that that's necessarily going to happen, because we still, we still have work to do.
Okay, I'm just asking, just a general question.
We still have three months of permitting with MASTIOT.
Right.
Okay.
So when, when we get your permit, it goes to the town clerk, once we reach the appeal period?
Yeah.
Not until that happens can we apply to MASTIOT.
Yeah. So, and that's, once we close the hearing, there's forty days for the, uh, for us to file with the town clerk as in a twenty-day appeal period, so you're right, you're getting into fall before, too long.
Right, so, uh, Mr. Chair, you could expect to see building demolition and utility shut offs and all those things happening.
Right away.
You know, as soon as possible.
And then we haven't done any financing for this either.
Okay.
So that would, we would start the project before we got financing, but that would come along too.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts here.
Okay.
Okay, so that's D six, did you have other?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a couple more, if you don't mind. So if we go to page thirteen at the top.
Yep.
D ten.
D ten.
So, D ten says that no construction vehicles shall be parked, oh, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the site. But in D one nine, which is in the, uh, construction management plan, it leaves us a little flexibility on that.
Wait a minute, wait.
So D, so page, um, goes from page ten on to page eleven. It says, "Parking of all construction vehicles and equipment shall be on the site during construction, except that, if additional parking is needed off-site, overflow parking in designated off-site locations shall be arranged with and approved by the DPW director. All construction equipment must be offloaded on the site, no construction vehicles shall be parked on a public street." That seems all fine, but then D ten seems to further restrict that. So if we could strike D ten, I think it's.
Yeah, thank you for catching that.
You think that's fair, Judy?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I mean, you probably can imagine this, but I've done so many of these, at this point, I kind of start with the boilerplate that, you know, it just sort of, it just rolls over from one decision to the next, and I try to catch these things, but.
Yep.
Really, this is very helpful.
Yeah, and, and if we could go back to D six, that was the hours of work.
Yeah.
Um, clearly, whatever the town bylaw is for noise, we're going to comply with.
Yeah.
When it says no work, um, I'm, I'm just thinking of a situation we had when we did the Wall Street project in Worcester. There was a subcontractor that screwed up fairly badly, and then they had a makeup time, so they had to work.
Yeah.
Uh, over, it was like a Memorial Day weekend or something like that, but that was because they.
Yeah.
Didn't show up, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Uh, that might happen, these things aren't clockwork all the time.
Well, then that's something you would have to come back to this board and we'd have to authorize, right? So, because if the, if the, if the agreement is saying that no Sundays are federal holidays, and a situation like that happens, then they have to come back to the board, and we would have to authorize that. They just can't go.
Are you asking for Sundays? Is that what?
I'm just saying, if, if we have a sub that needs to do it on those days, and it's not noise-producing, I would ask that we, we strike it, because say the painters come.
Yeah, so.
And they're inside, or they're.
So you're asking for a limitation not to work, but to just noise generation of any kind?
Just let the noise control all of that. Um, because say, the experience we had was, uh, it was during COVID, so the appliance factories were all backed up, so all of a sudden, like, the range, the ovens came, and they get delivered to the site. Well, we can't leave them outside, so we had to get them into the, like, that, it just, we took all weekend to do. And they get delivered to the site. Well, we can't leave them outside. So we had to get them into the, like that, it just, we took all weekend to do it. Um, so we, again, we just like to flex.
How do we know, you know, you will be doing it every Sunday, right?
Not every.
How do we know?
Yeah, but like.
Yeah. Who will be monitoring?
Well, if we're not making noise, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get it, to get to it, you know? So you will have an excuse to do it every Sunday, right?
Uh, I don't know about an excuse. I'm not sure I could get anybody to work on a Sunday.
Yeah, but you know, I think, you know, I don't know.
No, I, I would feel, this is just my, my personal opinion. I would feel more comfortable. I understand what Mr. Branca is saying.
Mm-hmm.
But I would feel more comfortable. If for some reason, there is a complication and they have to, they have to do something on a Sunday, I want them to come back to this board and notify that there's something that happened and I want to know what the situation was. And I want the board to be aware of it before they go and do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Why can't you just?
This specifically says that there's no, no working on Sundays or federal holidays.
Yeah, that's it.
Why can't you just say no exterior work on Sundays or holidays?
What's that? That's more, more where I was going, yeah.
No exterior work on Sundays or holidays.
Sundays or holidays.
I think that's really the point. Exterior work.
At the same time, you know, even if it is a interior work, there will be hammering, there will be a noise.
Well, yeah, so I.
So that'll be nice.
We might be able to deal with that, though, I think. I, if we say, to, to Judy's point, I mean, so for example, let, let's assume his hypothetical, all right? They're, they're running late for whatever reason. Say it's the painters. And they, they, they want to try and get back on track. They come in on Sunday for interior painting. I don't think that's going to bother anybody.
Yeah, I, I can give you an exact example is we'll use a larger contractor for the major electrical work, like powering the gen- you know, powering the, the building. But the, when the units are wired, we use small local vendors.
Yeah.
Uh, painters too, uh, people from the area, um, to give them the opportunity to do it. And they'll typically want to work on the project, so they'll fit it in whenever they can fit it in. But they're inside. They're not outside generating noise. They're hooking up, uh, you know, interior panels, things like that. And if they want to do it on a Sunday, I can't tell them no.
So to your point, Dave, okay, you're raising a good point.
But, but let me just say.
Yeah.
To what you brought up.
Yeah.
It says, "Construction activities that generate any noise shall be conducted only during the hours of seven AM to seven PM Monday through Saturday." Then comma, "And no work, no work."
Right.
Shall be conducted on Sundays or federal holidays. So to me, that, when they say no work, that means nothing can be done on Sundays.
No, I think, I think they know.
So what I'm saying, so that's fine. If something happens, if Mr. Branca has a situation that, and you know, that something needs to be done, that's fine. I want him to come and tell us that, you know, that a problem happened, you know, and so that the board is aware of it. I don't want any situations that happen.
I can, I can understand, but I think of their point as well is, is I don't know if one month to come to talk to us might already be kind of.
There's a three week.
No, no, you don't have to come. We can have a meeting, a quick meeting.
Well, I'm, that, you, I'm just saying, you can't set up a meeting for a month that it's going to be.
No, 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 we can have a quick meeting. We can have a Zoom meeting.
Or we can give the, we can give the chair the right to, he can send us a quick email or text to the, to the chair saying that this happened and this, we need to have somebody come in on a Sunday to do. And the chair can have the authorization to say, yes, go ahead and do it. And then he can send something out to us saying that Mr. Branca sent us, sent me a text message saying blah, 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 blah. And I authorized him to work on Sunday. I'll, I have no problem with that.
Would you be okay with like a condition of painting? If he just said, just for, if on Sundays, you know, because we know painting, right? If, if that was a condition of, you could write it in, of just painting, or unless you leave it the way it is.
Well, I, I, I just want to make a note that we were saying, well, these words say that, like, this isn't the state, the state labor laws that the contractors have to fight. They maybe have to pay people time and a half, things like that.
Yeah.
Um, they may want to work on Sunday to take another job. Um, but again, and, and I like Ms. Barrett's suggestion, is that no noise on those days.
Well, it already says that. It already says that.
Yeah, it, it.
Noise generating activity can only happen between seven and seven, Monday through Saturday.
That's correct.
The second clause is about, you know, prohibition on Sundays and federal holidays, but I think the issue is something that's disturbing.
Right.
So if you just say, "No exterior work can be conducted on Sundays or federal holidays," I think that gets at the point.
I agree, but I do like to see this ninety-four North Main Street thing.
Hmm.
So we'll check it. And also our bylaw, is there anything says in the bylaw, working on Sundays and holidays?
I, I, again, I can.
I think in all this side plan, there's, uh, uh, comprehensive permit as well as the.
Well.
Subdivisions, all says no Sundays. Uh, uh, my feeling is, you know, it's there in the bylaw.
Yeah.
I, I just did a search for whatever it's worth in your zoning bylaw and I couldn't find anything, but that doesn't mean it's not there. I just couldn't find it.
It's very, it's very hard to see it in our bylaw.
Well, there's also state and federal law, which I think we're all aware of, um, about, about how those things work. And again, sometimes I may not know what's happening. So I may not know that they're planning to go there on a Sunday to notify you. Um, because they may just say, they may send two guys back on Sunday because they didn't show up on Saturday. Um, I mean, those things happen on construction sites all the time. Um, or something breaks and they need to go fix it. And while they're there, well, they're going to do whatever else that they can do while they're there. And that happens all the time on construction sites.
That, that, that pro- that hours thing must be in your subdivision regulations or something because it's not in the zoning bylaw. I'm sorry, I've done a complete search. It's not there.
So it's probably in the.
That's my recollection, Judy.
It's probably in site plan review. It has to be.
Well, e- but even that's in the zone. I think it's in the subdivision.
I mean, I did a search for hours, Sunday, holidays. I mean, all the obvious things that you would search for and it's not coming up. So it must be somewhere else if it exists.
Yeah.
Well, as far as the thing about what he's talking about the Sunday, I'll leave it up to you.
Yeah.
If you decide that you want to go ahead and do it, as far as I'm concerned, I think that they should be able to send you a quick, you know, text and saying that this is what's happening.
Yeah.
You can send, you can make the decision and say yes or no, and then send something to the board saying that this is what you authorize.
Mm-hmm.
So the thing is, you know, this will prevent, so prevent from every Sunday, there will be that. How do we, how do we monitor, right?
Yeah.
If it is not happening every single Sunday.
So, so you're saying Chris can have the authority?
Yeah, as long as they notify.
By Chris and he can give the chair the order.
Right, and then he can just notify us by, by text or email. I, I feel comfortable that.
I think it's better than doing a meeting because I think that's too much time.
That's fine. Like I said, but it's up to the rest of the board. I'm just one, I'm just one voice. It's up to the rest of the board to make the decision too on how they feel about it. I'm just one voice, okay? That's just my feeling because I'm looking and it says, "No work shall be conducted on Sundays." And if, like you said, if Mr. Branca has an issue, you know, then that's what, that's how I, and it happens to, he needs to do something on Sunday. That's how I would like to see it done. But that, like I said.
And, and again, like, we may not even know that it's, like, there are people that are going to have access to the site that are, have contracts.
Yeah.
And subcontracts. And they may send people, oh, go finish that. I may not know.
Yeah.
And to notify, and, and I don't think you want somebody calling you at five o'clock on the, in the morning on Memorial Day or for.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just my own personal view. I, I'm not looking to sort of, you know, micromanage the, the, the projects.
Yeah, and, and I understand the rationale. Obviously, again, you have to comply with federal and state labor laws for Sundays and holidays. But disturbing the neighbors, I think, is with the primary concern is first language.
Right.
Um, and, and, and I don't know, Ms. Barrett, is that, that came in because it just, I mean, it's, it's comply with state labor law. We have to do that anyway. And then generating any noise.
We've already addressed the noise issue in the first clause in the sentence.
Right.
Yeah.
You can't do gen- noise generating activity outside those hours, from seven to seven, Monday to Saturday.
Yeah.
They can't. So the question is just, so what is allowed, if anything, on Sunday or a federal holiday? And all I'm saying is that it seems to me as though what the board would be concerned about is, is disturbing activity.
Right.
It's not your problem whether, whether, uh, federal and state wage laws are complied with. That's not the board's jurisdiction.
Right.
That, so if the, if the matter is disturbance, then I think just simply adding a word, "No exterior work shall be conducted," gets you there. I don't know why anybody would have to send a text message to a board chair to say, "I need to have somebody working outside today." I, I just, it just seems very odd to me. I've never, you know, I wish now I had just put that word in there. I don't think we'd even be having this discussion.
Mm-hmm. And we're happy with exterior. And again, if it's an emergency, it's an emergency, right? That's not an issue. We can, that's, it'll be obvious. There'll be a fire truck there or something.
Right.
Um, but we wouldn't plan any exterior work on those days.
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, so let me take a step back. So I agree with Judy's point that sort of, I think the point of the sentence here is really more about the noise than it is about the work.
That, my, my feeling is there must be a reason why we put it, "No Sundays and holidays." There must be a reason.
Because that's, that's state, that's state law.
That, otherwise, you know, we wouldn't.
I put it in there, guys. It didn't come from you. I'm just working. Half of this stuff is just sort of boilerplate that sometimes gets used and sometimes is not.
Yeah.
So I could have easily just not included that clause.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we'd be having this discussion if I had not put that in the sentence. I'm suggesting that you just either take it out or put the word exterior in there because I think people are getting hung up on something that's just already solved by the first clause in this sentence.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I still think we should do the homework on the, on the North Main Street piece, Raj, okay?
Exactly.
I think as far as the, the broader point is concerned, Dave, I take your points. I, I think this is good to consider, good to think about. Nate, yours as well. Um, the way this sentence is written, if we add in that term exterior, uh, Judy, uh, a- as you suggested, I feel reasonably comfortable with that because the, the noise part is still entirely regulated, not just by our regular noise bylaws, but by this paragraph as well.
Right.
I, I think that's the most likely complaint that we might hear from, say, a neighbor on this is going to be the noise around either sleeping or even, e- even maybe on a Sunday. But if we change this language and whatever work they may be doing on a given Sunday for whatever reason, so long as it's not noise producing, um, I don't know that, that we necessarily need to know exactly what's going on, uh, you know, every single Sunday dur- during, during construction. That's, that's my two cents.
I agree with you.
That, that, that's kind of where I am. So Judy, would you, given your experience, would you be comfortable with that, that edit? It sounds like you would, the one you suggested about just adding.
About inserting the word exterior?
Yeah.
If I have work, yeah, I think that's fine. I think that's the point.
Okay. And then.
For me, you know, I think, you know, we need to double check with the ninety-four North.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a comprehensive permit.
Yeah.
It's a comprehensive permit.
Yes.
And also we have all, all of the site.
The site plan, I will check, I'll try to check those as well.
Yeah, uh, if it is there, I, I have no problem.
Yeah.
But the problem is, you know, if you do, if you.
So I think my recollection is, again, so just in case you guys aren't aware.
So our town bylaw says no.
Say that again.
Your town bylaw says no.
Um. Yeah, so it.
We have to check on.
I, I, it's, it's something, it's something we need to check. I'm, I'm, my recollection is I'm skeptical that there's something in zoning that covers that. But.
So why don't we just do the, do the homework?
Do the homework.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say is, you know, obviously, every site's different. Um, and this is different than the North Main Street project.
Yeah.
We don't have backyards on top of the site.
Yeah.
Or, or an abiding nursing home.
Or an abiding nursing home, right?
So we do need to worry about town bylaws.
Absolutely.
Right, and we have to comply with it anyway.
Right, and to his point, that wouldn't allow him to violate the bylaws anyways.
Even if we said you could do it twenty-four seven, we still couldn't do it.
Exactly. So I think that's our saving grace is, we're not giving them anything more than, than what the bylaws already have.
Yeah.
Um, it's just, what is the language here saying?
If it is, uh, if the town bylaw allows on a Sunday, federal holidays, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
But if it is not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say yes.
Okay.
So let's just look at the bylaws.
Let's take a look, see what it says and we'll, 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 uh, come back to this. Excellent. All right, so, uh, sorry about that diversion.
Can, can we go back for a minute? Okay, so we're, we're deleting D ten completely, correct?
We're discussing.
That was my suggestion to the chair.
Okay, and because of what reasoning is back?
Because the, the language about.
Bottom of page ten.
Construction vehicles, parking and off-site options are covered.
On what page?
Under a previous section on.
Bottom of page ten.
Eleven at the top, right? Right, page ten at the bottom going on to page eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, so have you had a discussion with the PD, DPW director on where this area would be? This off-site area for the designated equipment would be? Or do you have to have?
No, but our clients are operating the site across the street. So if they had some piece of equipment or employees, you know, say we're paving this day.
Okay.
All the construction employees have to park elsewhere. He's got.
We have party.
Across the street.
Okay.
Where they could park.
All right, what is, what is across the street means?
Other plaza with the Duncan in it?
Oh, you mean I can't go get a coffee?
Yeah, you can't, you just can't park, go through the drive-through. Yeah, or, or you could reach an agreement with one of the other neighboring property owners with the, uh.
I mean, I have to walk to the drive-through?
Or something like that, just for one day to have the employees.
And, and again, the site is large enough. It's over five acres. I, I don't see us needing to put anything but a, a delivery of steel beams or something would be the only thing I could think of.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, are you, are we, are the, is the board, are we agreeing to delete number D ten?
I'm.
I think you can delete it. I think it's fine.
Yeah, so right now, I, I'm comfortable with that.
So rest of the board.
Because I, I do, I do like the other language that talks about.
Okay.
You know.
All right, you just want to make sure.
If, if you want to do that for some reason in the future, you may be able to, but you still need to get approval from DPW.
Okay.
There's still someone overseeing.
Exactly, and that's important.
In the other, I'll bring up a sp- specific example. Again, the Wall Street project was the most similar, seventy-two units on one site. It wasn't as flat as this site. It was on the side of a, a hill. Um, and the only time we needed anything like that was when they delivered these long giant steel beams with a massive truck. So we had to call the cops. They had, like, it was a whole process.
Yeah.
So everybody knew and, and that, and it, and it was a very coordinated thing and we got them on and off-site as quickly as possible because it couldn't get onto the site. It was so big. Um, and again, that we would be calling the police, we'd be calling DPW because, because it's a state road.
Sure.
And the back is a small road. We couldn't even put that truck there, probably.
Okay. All right, so you may have had one or two others, uh, some more changes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yep.
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 So at the bottom of that same page, page thirteen, E-three mentions internal roadways. You don't have internal roadways. We have a parking lot. And then E-four on the next page says the same thing, internal roadways.
Yep. Thank you.
So you said that was E-three and where was the second instance?
E-four.
E-three and E-four, I think.
Okay.
Okay, can we just go back to E-three for a second?
Yes.
When you get old, you just don't, sometimes don't understand things. Can you just kind of refresh my memory on what exactly we... I, I understand part of it, but then it says, "In accordance with the final plan, unless the board specifically waivers otherwise in running", what would, what would we?
Yep, through the chair, uh, through the chair, I'm just suggesting that you change the words "internal roadways" to "parking lot". I'm not asking that to strike the condition.
To parking lot, okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Not at all.
Thank you.
Yep, and then same thing on E-four.
Yep.
Sorry, Judy.
No, this is very helpful. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else?
We'll go blind working on these things after a while.
Yes, sir. If we could move on to page fifteen.
Okay.
Item H-two.
Which one?
H-two.
This one just has some repetitive language.
Yep.
So if you could strike in the first sentence, the words "including but not limited to final course of pavement", that's already covered in the next sentence.
Yep.
Okay, so in the first sentence, we're, we're striking what now?
The words, beginning with the word "including",
Yep.
On to the next line, the word "pavement".
Yeah. Okay.
If we could move on to page sixteen at the top.
The reference to homeowners association?
Yes, if you could change that to owner rather than association and...
I did. I've already caught that.
Which one?
It was stupid.
One point six. So this one says, "The landscaping of the site shall be maintained in perpetuity by the homeowners association." We don't have an association. We just have the owner.
So we're crossing out the owners?
We're striking that, the whole sentence with the restrictive language.
Right. Yep. That's the one I caught at like five o'clock this afternoon. I said, "Oh, no, I can't believe I did that."
That always happens when you read it a second time. That's why we're reviewing a draft.
You got it.
I understand.
So if we move down, move down that page to I-eleven, it's related to abutting conservation land. I don't believe we have that situation, so I suggest we strike that.
Yep. Yep.
That was I-eleven?
I-eleven.
Yeah, I-eleven.
I could make a bingo joke, but I won't. Next page seventeen, please, at the top. Items, I-fifteen, I-sixteen, and I-eighteen.
Yep.
I suggest are not applicable to this project.
Yep.
Can I ask why?
Well, one is about notice to the homeowners association, having town council review the homeowners association documents and so forth, that we would pay reasonable fees for that. And then in eighteen, that we would pay some amount prior to the building permit for removal of solid waste from the abutting town property. Doesn't really apply.
Okay.
Goes, yep.
So, Mr. Chair?
Gone.
So obviously, it's from a different project, which was abutting some town property, and there was some situation that needed to be cleaned up. We just don't have that situation.
It's a problem with boilerplate. It's like, um, there were a couple of con...
Just for the record, Judy, I'm not being critical. You know, the same thing happens to me writing stormwater reports.
Especially when you try to get it in for the hearing. We appreciate you getting it in for the hearing.
You agree?
Well, I should have had it done sooner. There were a couple of conditions that Wayne had suggested too, that, but they're already in his letter to the board from May, and I just didn't have a chance to integrate them. But my sense was there was no controversy about them.
No.
I mean, they were in his final letter, so those, they'll get fit in wherever, but it's not anything new.
So just on that, so we talked about removing I-fifteen,
Sixteen.
I-eighteen. I, I had one question on I-sixteen. "Applicants shall pay reasonable cost fees and expenses of West Boysen Town Council as provided herein in performing for and on behalf of the board and the town. Any review specified and required in this decision is necessary to effect the provisions and requirements here of..." So does, Judy, does that pertain to, I don't know, review after the fact? Like, after approval? Wha, what is that?
Well, I'm sure the board is gonna want town council to review this decision
Yes.
before you call it final and file it with the town clerk.
Yes.
You know, I, that's, that's what it's referring to, but
Yeah, so part of the...
Normally, when I see town council fees covered, it's, it's really for the homeowners association docs.
Okay.
Not, not for the review of the permit. That's part of their normal duties to the town.
Okay. Because, yeah, so what I was gonna add was, and this is actually one of the things I wanted to make sure we touch on tonight briefly, is, because I know we're still holding some, some funds which were provided by the applicant that covered, for example, the engineering review, traffic review, the, the review of the sewer to make sure that there was sufficient capacity. And, and also part of the point of that is, you know, any legal review or assistance we may need in being able to vote on this, on this petition. So I think we're still holding sufficient funds to be able to get this draft at some point when it's ready, permit in front of town council for their review. So, so I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't need to, to contemplate it in, in the permit. I guess I'm, I just want to make sure, first of all, that everybody's aware of that. And second of all, I'm sort of agnostic as to whether or not, I guess, we mention it here, but I'm, I'm willing to listen to...
Is there something wrong to leave this one here? Nothing wrong?
Well, typically, the applicant's not responsible for paying for town council services.
Yeah.
Typically, that's, that's really not the applicant's problem. It's, it's usually done for the condo docs to make sure those are in order, but in terms of reviewing a decision and so forth, the applicant's really not responsible for that.
Yeah.
Just telling you.
Okay. Okay. So, I mean, I, I guess, I feel a little bit more comfortable about striking I-sixteen because we still, the, the applicant's already provided, I think, what should be sufficient funds to cover the legal review that we've been planning to do all along at the end of this, before we finally file it with the town clerk.
Isn't it that's the exact same thing it says? "Applicants shall pay all reasonable cost, fees, expenses of the West Boysen Town Council
Yeah.
as provided herein
Right.
to perform, for, on behalf of the board and the town, town of West Boysen."
Yeah. And I guess, so...
Is it something different or?
I, I think she's saying it makes more sense in the context of that homeowners association piece above it, because that's where...
So those things where it is covered, say like, you know, this comprehensive permit will be reviewed by the town council, is it, uh, we don't have to say anywhere, or how that, how that will be covered?
It's not a peer review service. Peer review, the funds that you collect for peer review are the kinds of reviews that are covered by Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G, and the comprehensive permit regulations, but legal review is not one of them. Typically, that's not part of what the applicants...
Who pays for the legal services? The town?
Yeah. It's just part of the normal town council responsibilities to review decisions like this. I'm just telling you, that's really not part of the peer review function.
Mm-hmm.
Your, your, your fifty-three G account is for peer review consulting services, not for legal services.
Yeah, so we have in our, I know we have in our, do I have them right here? Our regulations, it contemplates this. Let me see if I can find it here.
Yeah, well, you gotta make sure they're not inconsistent with the state regulations, too.
Certainly. Certainly.
And I don't have those open right now. I'm actually trying to find that reference, so...
Let me see where I can find it. I got my bylaws. Where's my regs? Yes, I am. Oh, you do? Excellent, totally. Thank you. I see these for a second. Thank you very much.
Section one point nine, I believe. Page ten of your regulations.
One point nine?
Fees.
Yeah, there it is. Thank you.
So the state regulations under seven sixty CMR fifty-six specifically provide that legal fees for general representation of the board or other boards shall not be imposed on the applicant.
All the related documents. Here it is.
Review fees can be imposed for consultants to review the work of
Find it.
submittals from the applicant in connection with the applicant's specific project. And if it's, you know, in compliance with applicable law and the board's
Yep.
and the board's rules, but you cannot impose on the applicant responsibility for paying for legal fees, legal fees.
So, so, well, let me read this, because, and I'm not saying I'm right. I'm just saying that wasn't my previous understanding. In the case only of comprehensive permits, where a board has previously passed regulations to this effect. So I might, I might be wrong. I'm, I'm totally open to that. But let me just read what at least the regulation says, and we can go from there. So we're looking at Regulation one point nine point three. It's on page ten, if anybody has it. It's the very last couple of lines. And it's talking about that technical planning review and consultation fee, which the applicant has already provided to us, and we're holding in a forty-three G account, minus the amount that, you know, VHB has already taken out of that and the sewer review that has been taken out. We still have, you know, a significant amount of money being held in a forty-three G account. But so that's what this is talking about. It's saying, "The purpose of this fee portion is to cover all technical engineering and plan review costs as required by the zoning board of appeals for the board's adequate review and decision on the applicant's plan." That's exactly what you just said, I think, Judy, because it's going to technical review of the, the application. But then it says, the, the reg continues, the, our regulation continues. "Costs include, but are not necessarily limited to project coordination, pro forma review, legal support, professional engineering services, reviews, consultations, and reports." So it does mention legal support.
Right, but you can't have regulations that conflict with EOHLC's regulations.
Agreed. And so I guess that's the question that I have, is, um, because, I mean, the, we inherited these regulations from a, a previous zoning board of appeals. And so I guess that's the question that I have.
Yeah, it's...
There is a second...
There's a whole section in the state regs that deals with consultant review fees, and it says...
But we inherited this, but we had, we had someone redo this far as when we became a board, when the board was restructured.
Yep.
We had somebody redo this far, and this is what they came up with.
Yeah.
So I think they probably need another review.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I think it needs another review" because you can't, you know, it's, you gotta have local regulations, but you can't have local regulations that conflict with the state's regulations for forty-B. I mean, I don't know how else to value that. You just can't.
No, I, I totally agree with that point. I totally agree with that. And so then it becomes, you know, is that in fact what's going on here?
General representation of the board, I mean...
Wait a minute, let me just check one more thing. I thought I had some notes on this piece when we started. Turnover of the board.
Just so you know, Judy, this was done in June seventeenth of twenty thirteen.
Well, that's, that's a problem.
Okay. And I came on the board in November of twenty twelve. That's when the board was reformed, thanks to the Board of Selectmen.
So have these rules, the, the state rules changed since, what was it, twenty eleven?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen?
Can we double-check it?
Is that what's going on?
Not, not this part.
I, I would, I would be comfortable.
This standard's been around for a while.
Okay, we can do that. That's not a problem.
The, the problem is, you know, why the town has to pay for this, some, someone...
So I get that.
Yeah.
On the other end, I want to make sure that the funds that we have, that we're only paying things that we should be paying.
Right.
Right, right.
Why do we get that money?
Yeah, right, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
Why do we get this money, too? Zoning board's money?
No, no, whatever we don't, whatever doesn't get used in this review goes back to the applicant.
But the legal fees, yeah. That will be like a few thousand dollars, right? It's not going to be...
Well, it's not gonna be nothing, yeah.
I thought whatever was left, Mr. Bronco was taking us out to dinner.
Nobody, I did not hear that.
Yeah, I don't know if that's...
I did not hear that.
I think it has to be less than fifty dollars.
Come on.
Or it's a bribe.
Can we have a little bit of fun where we hear?
A ham sandwich, right?
Not on a TV. It's a VBA now. Can't have fun, Dave.
Breakfast sandwich.
So, review. Judy, thank you for bringing up this, this...
Sorry.
Because I want to make sure that, that this is done, obviously, correctly.
Correctly, yeah. I understand.
So it's, that's a second little piece of homework to follow up on. And obviously, I mean, this is your money. We want to make sure that we're, we're being good stewards here. So this is, this is critical.
Chris, I think the thing that might be helpful to the board is to recognize that the point of the fifty-three G account is to be able to engage consultants to review the application.
Yeah.
So it's a technical review of what the applicant has submitted. That's what those funds are for.
Okay. And so technical in, in your statement excludes something like legal support, legal review?
Well, the state regulations specifically say that.
Yeah.
But in addition, the council, the attorney's not being asked to review the application. See, that's engineering, that's architecture, that's wet rooms. That's, you know, they're not reviewing the application.
Yeah. So I guess my question, and this goes to the last question that I wanted to, or the last topic that I wanted to cover, which was, it's been my understanding all along that at some point in this process, we would reach out to, to town council when we had sort of an advanced draft of the, the comprehensive permit, for their final legal review. I totally get your point, that they're not gonna look at every engineering document and, and read through that. But at least as a legal document, as far as the comprehensive permit goes, that they would at least take a look at that, review that, make sure i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and say, "Yes, this looks, you know, legally permissible and, and well-done", and, 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 you know, the, the board can do what they want, but they, they shouldn't feel like there's a legal impediment to proceeding. That, that's, that's what my understanding had been on. Again, maybe I'm wrong.
No, 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 we have, even the subdivisions,
Yeah.
regulation, subdivision approval,
Yeah.
we do send it to them.
Yeah.
They, you know, I know that Westland Sector,
Yeah.
the legal fees were paid by the, the developer.
Okay.
So let's check it, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
As you said, you know, we, we don't want to...
Yep. So I, I will check that, absolutely.
One, one suggestion I might make is that, depending on, depending on what your contract with the law firm says,
Yeah.
and it's probably the same law firm that everybody else uses, it may include routine decisions and decisions by your boards
Right.
reviewing those. I'm not sure you're already paying for it.
Let's check it, please.
I'll check. I'll check. All right, so, but Judy, thank you for, you know, raising that, that issue, because we definitely want to get that right. All right, so I think, so with all that in mind, going back to I-sixteen, we were talking about, do we want to leave that in or pull that out?
We'll, we'll check it, and then, you know, if it is not, uh... Yeah, I would leave it at now, but if it is not...
We do our homework.
Homework, and then if it is not, then we can remove it.
So we're definitely removing I-fifteen and I-eighteen?
I think that's what we had
Okay.
come to.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I think that's right. All right. So just, I'm not trying to belabor this at, at all, I promise. It's just, I, I want to make sure that we're doing everything that, that we need to be doing, sort of, as a matter of prudence here. So Judy, the question that I'll ask is, in your experience, when you get to sort of this point in a public hearing where you seem to be nearing the end, you seem to be near the process of, you know, having the draft, conditions of approval, we're, we're trying to sort of complete this process, is it, is it normal, is it standard at some point for a board, a town board to engage with town council for some kind of review before the board votes? Or is that sort of, you know, not, not, not necessarily an ordinary course of action?
So typically, what I see is the board will send a draft of the decision to town council or engage, or ask town council to write the decision, but usually, I don't see that, you know. I guess because when a consultant is sent from MHP, I think some work is done that maybe isn't done in towns that don't have a, a technical assistance consultant. But, you know, the decision, I think any decision on an approval like this should go to town council for review, and, you know, they may want to add some language or change some language around, but you know, the whole point of trying to get this draft out is to frankly save the town some money.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, town council, or, you know, the other thing I see is that sometimes the applicant is asked to submit a draft that goes to town council, and then town council does with it whatever, but that's, that's a function of town councils... council does with it whatever. But that's, that's a function of town council's engagement with the town.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not because this particular project really is any different from any other project. It's still a decision that has, you know, implications for the town.
Yeah. Okay. So one-
To protect the town's best interest, you know, he has to look for it.
Yes. Fair enough.
One, one comment I'd like to make is I think we're conflating two different things. One is your decision and the other is the written decision, right? The grounds for the decision.
Yeah.
That town council will review to make sure that it complies with the state laws, Ms. Barrett just pointed out, like legal fees, he may, he or she may say, take that. It's Roger Smirjic, I think is your, is the person that was on the first hearing I know.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Um, may, he may tell you, well, you can't do that, uh, this wording, you know, he'll do that. But he's not going to tell you, you voted yes or no. I mean, you can vote however you'd like to vote.
Yes.
Um, and then it's up to town council to make sure the written document that you present complies with the law and protects you on appeal.
Yep.
So they're two different things. You could vote right now.
Yep.
And we're talking about the language of the appeal so that we're all on the same page.
Yes.
Which is different than it being, having a legal review.
Yeah.
You can change whatever you want, whether we like it or not.
That's right.
If you vote yes and make changes to this and have town council make changes to it. And if we don't like it, we can appeal, but-
Yeah, I, I mean, the board can vote tonight. I'm not saying you should, but the board can vote tonight, say, we're going to grant this comprehensive permit, you know, subject to conditions to be hashed out over the next forty days. Um, you know, there are some boards that don't even have this discussion with the applicant, which always makes me cringe, because I think they, I think it's better off for you guys to talk about these conditions.
Yeah.
Before the board decides what to do. But the whole point of the forty days is for the board to be able to, to deliberate and prepare a decision and file it with the town clerk within the forty day period. So-
And that's the forty day period.
Having this, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, that was very helpful, Judy. And so that forty day period, that is designed for after the public hearing is closed, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And you can work on the decision, and if you want to have additional conversations, we can have additional conversations, subject to the meetings law.
Yeah.
Subject to the open meetings law.
Yeah.
No, actually, the, the board cannot do that.
No. Okay.
No. I mean, once the board closes the hearing, there's no further discussion with, with other parties than internal to the board. Otherwise, the board would be, you know, a, an interested party who's not the applicant could say, well, why aren't you consulting with me? Public hearing's closed. Why does the applicant get a different relationship with the board than anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I see what you're saying. Yeah, because it's my understanding that once the public hearing is closed, we're not supposed to, you know, consider anything else sort of on the record, that sort of the official records closed. The board can deliberate in, in an open session. We can talk about the pros, the cons, are we going to vote yes, we're going to vote no, what about this section, what about that? But as far as any new information, whether from the applicant or anybody in the public, we're not supposed to do that once the hearings close. That's my understanding.
That is correct.
Okay.
You can talk to me, your consultant, but I mean-
We cannot make any change.
You gotta, you gotta, if you're going to close the door, you gotta close it.
Exactly. Yeah, that's my understanding. So are there questions?
So I think, I think one thing from my perspective, I think that we as the board should be really careful about when, when to close the hearing, because if we do have any discussions, you know, and we have any information that we need from Mr. Healy or from Mr. Bronka, we should be able to, you know, contact them and say, or even from Mr. Amico, or even from Mrs. Barrett.
Yep.
You know, we should be able to be able to contact them. But if we close the public hearing, like Mrs. Barrett said, you know, we can't, we can only talk amongst ourselves. So if, if Mr. Osseani comes up and has, brings up a point and we're like, oh, well, that's a good point, you know, and we don't have, we don't have an answer, and it's something that maybe one of those four people can answer.
Yeah.
We're, we're kind of like, basically like, now we're in limbo because we don't have. So I think that we have to be really careful when to close, when to close the public hearing and to make sure that all our, all our questions are answered, you know, that all our inquiries-
We should be, we should be comfortable.
Right, exactly. Thank you. That's the words I was looking for.
Until then, I'm, I'm not comfortable.
I'm not, I'm not comfort, at this stage, I'm not comfortable. Meaning what? I'm not, because, no, don't take offense to this, but we just got this this morning. I didn't know I had a chance to really go through it.
Of course, no, of course.
Totally reasonable.
And to be honest with you, and I know that Mr. Healy did a great job he wanted to talk about.
Yep.
I personally, I would have liked to have gone through this, you know, item by item, you know, with Mr. Healy and Mr. Bronka, you know, but that's not the way we did it. We just went through what they wanted to, you know, to eliminate, which is fine. It's okay. I don't have a problem with that. But I'm going to, I will, I will review this, and if there's any things that I don't understand, I will mark, and then at the next meeting, I will come back. And I will not hesitate to ask you, because I'm a very inquisitive person. Ask Mr. Bronka. We've had many conversations.
Yes, we have.
And Mr. Healy knows me from, from when I go to planning board meetings, and he's there, he looks in cringes when he sees me at the planning board meetings. He knows that I'm going to ask questions. So be prepared.
All right. So I think both of your points are, are very well taken.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I think that's totally fair. So I, personally, I agree. I would not, because of what, a lot of what you just said, I would not be in favor of closing the public hearing tonight. Now, one other point I want to make that's related is we're, we still have that hundred and eighty day.
Right.
Timeframe, which by my, correct me if I'm wrong, by my timeframe, we have maybe till two weeks.
July seventh.
Basically two weeks, um, before that, that window closes. So could we, in view of what you just said.
Yeah.
Could we consider continuing to hope, what is hopefully one last session of the public hearing in the next week or two at the latest? Could, could we, uh, can, can we make that happen, all of us, in terms of schedule and ability to review this document between now and then?
I-
What's the date you're looking for? So next Monday is what, June thirtieth?
Yeah.
I'm just throwing these out there. Please let me know if, if, if these don't work.
I will be out of town between July third and July eleventh.
Okay. So-
My next meeting is the seventeenth. I mean, can we hold off till July seventeenth?
So we already have two hearings that night?
We do.
One of them is early night.
Yeah, one of us is, so we can do.
Just open and continue the hearing.
I'm on vacation on the seventeenth, so I won't be. Okay. All right. So, so that will work. Um, thank you.
Is that when you start your vacation, the seventeenth?
No, it's, no.
Okay.
So you're leaving on the third, you said?
The third to the eleventh.
So I'm wondering, can we do something maybe next week before the third?
I think we'll be ready with this. Do you, you do need to send it to the attorneys, right?
Well, we, we don't have to, that's what that forty day period is for, after the hearings close.
So you just want to go through what our questions, these two, yeah.
You're going to look up those and then we can make a, which- Then we can decide, do we have the sufficient information that we feel comfortable voting up or down?
Uh, do you think we could get one on one more extension? Hundred and forty means hundred and forty?
Uh, I guess.
We're, we're going to be here on the seventeenth anyway, so we'd be comfortable continuing it to the, to the seventeenth meeting.
So you would be open to that further?
If that's what you need.
I, I don't want to. Yeah, he's, I think he's- It's not a work thing, it's vacation, so I don't want to.
When will you be back?
I'm gone all that week. I'm, I'm the week before, the week after, but not that week.
But you, you will have a cell phone, right? Zoom it.
Well, so, I, so I, I actually looked into this. So we, we have, um, I was talking to the town clerk about this. I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head.
Damien?
Damien. No, I, I was thinking of a different word, but thank you. Um, I know that the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, I think it's called now, uh, it's the Mullen Rule.
The Mullen Rule.
Where you can miss one meeting.
Yeah.
And so long as you certify in writing that after the meeting, you watched the video and, and reviewed all the, the materials, then you can certify, um, that you're still entitled to vote because you, you reviewed the materials that you missed.
So don't you think that's going, seventeenth going, maybe we'll be voting on it?
No, that would just be closing the hearing. We could vote that night, but we have forty days to. That starts the forty day clock before we have to vote. Is that fair, Judy? I think that's the rule.
You have forty days from, you don't, you don't vote in the public hearing anyway. You close the public hearing, then you vote. You have forty days to prepare the decision and file it with the town clerk.
Yeah. So I think we wouldn't vote until after we close the public hearing and after we've, we fleshed out these couple of pieces that we're unsure of, and after we've, I'm assuming we're still going to reach out to town council and say, can you review this? And get back to us within that forty day period.
Town council comes back.
That happens during the forty days.
Yeah.
Right.
So after closing the hearing, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we would still be doing that.
When, when we send it into the town council, if he wants to make changes, what will, what happens?
They can do that. You have forty days.
You can continue to meet without us and just change this however you want to.
We can change-
It's under your power to make-
We just can't seek additional information.
Right. But what happens if town council comes back with changes that we need to talk to them about?
Depending upon what it is.
Okay.
If it's nothing new, if it's, you know, a clarification maybe of what was discussed.
I would feel more comfortable with, at the next meet, we have the next meeting to make a decision on whether we should close the, 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 the public hearing.
Yes.
I, I just, I, I'm not real comfortable right now.
Absolutely.
And I, I don't know. Like I said, I want to read this extensively and, you know, kind of rack my brain and stuff.
Yep.
And make sure that I understand it.
Yep.
And I'm going to listen to what Ms. Mrs. Barrett said. I'm going to go and, um, look under the Massachusetts General Laws.
Yep.
Chapter seventy-seven A, Acts of nineteen sixty-nine. Is that right? That where I would find the comprehensive permit rules and regulations?
That's the statute. The rules and regulations are in the state code. I can send to you the citation when we wrap up tonight.
Okay, can you do that?
That'd be great, Judy.
Thank you. That would be greatly appreciated.
And so, but getting back to my point, because we want to make sure that Nate remains a voting member here, so that we have all five members.
Oh, we'll never lose Nate as a voting member. Come on.
And by the way, we're going to need to do this. We're going to need to do this with John, uh, because of tonight anyways. Um, so would you be, would you be comfortable with that? And if we, if we hold the hearing on the seventeenth, your guard?
So you said, I, I would need to watch the video and then-
Any review of any materials that were submitted for that meeting. Review it. And then you basically write a, you certify in, in a written document that you filed with the town clerk that I've reviewed these.
Okay.
And, you know, um-
And that could be the following week.
Yes.
For me, to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
I will, I, I can even work on getting, you know, a draft of what that document would look like.
Okay, as long as it's the following week.
It's called the Mullen Rule, so it's totally above-
I'm all right. Just like I said, it's got to be the following week.
So when would you, you would be voting at the next scheduled hearing?
So-
He won't be at? I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so I-
I want to make sure that the timeline works.
Absolutely, yes. So I think right now, what we're considering is continuing this hearing tonight to, what is it, July seventeenth, where you're already going to be here for, for, for the other, uh-
For the other project.
And then we would consider closing the public hearing for this, uh-
Hearing.
For this, for this hearing, uh, at, at that night, a, at that time, but not necessarily voting that night. So we'd close the public hearing. That starts that forty day period, by which we have to have filed a written decision with the town clerk. Does, does that clarify your-
Yeah, I'm just not sure. I think I have to defer to Ms. Barrett on if you would have to vote after you close the public hearing in the same meeting because it was noticed and we're on the agenda? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I mean, the board doesn't have to vote, as a matter of practice, the board does not have to vote the same night they close the hearing. Usually they do. Um, I mean, usually that's what I see. But the board, the whole point of closing the hearing is, does the board have all the information it needs to make a decision? That's the point of the public hearing. So once the board can say, we don't have any more questions. We have all the information we need. We need time to deliberate. Then, um, you know, they got forty days to do that.
Yeah.
So the thing is, you know, we don't want to drag it.
Yes.
More than what it should be.
Agree.
But, yes, agree.
If something comes up, we do need to, you know, clean up and then vote on it. Everyone is comfortable.
You just got this today, we understand.
You're comfortable. You don't want a no vote from me, right?
We don't want to rush anybody.
Rush anybody. So if everyone is comfortable, and then, you know, we can-
So let me, let me just throw this out there. So here's another thought. I'm not saying I need to do this, I want to do this. I'm just throwing this out there for the board to consider. If we're talking about continuing the hearing with the applicant's approval to July seventeenth, which is our next regular meeting, Nate, I know, I know you won't be there. But if we're talking about that, I mean, that's still three plus weeks away. In theory, we could send this draft to town council now and get their feedback for that meeting before closing the public hearing.
I'll tell you now, please.
At least, at least the draft. I mean, not the final version with all the-
Yeah, but let me clean it up before you send it, because we've already, you know, been doing red line on this tonight.
Yeah. But if that would make folks feel better, and if maybe that could help move things along more quickly, rather than doing it stepwise, try to do it all between now and July seventeenth, I'd be open to that.
Yeah.
If, just a quick question. Do we need a full vote for all five?
You know, even if it's-
I'm saying Dave was here.
One second, you know, if July seventh, we didn't vote, okay? So once he comes back, we can have a quick meeting. Right?
Yeah, we can have-
We can have a very quick meeting.
As long as it's within forty days, we can do it whenever we want. Now, to your point and to your question, I still am not anticipating that we would vote on July seventeenth, even if we reach out to town council, if for no other reason than he's not going to be here.
Right.
You need four votes.
You, you need three. You just need, it's a simple majority.
That's it?
Right.
No.
It's three. Nope.
Yes, it is. Simple majority for a comprehensive permit.
Yes. For state law.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, so let me just, just throw something out there as well. If you wanted to, you could still take a vote.
We could, but-
Without me, would Dave just be there?
That's to their disadvantage. I mean, they can say, hey, yeah, we're okay with that. But they need, they would need three out of four instead of three out of five.
I'm not voting less needs here. Sorry. Sorry, buddy. We go with, and, uh, we can do that, Chris. We just-
We're belaboring the point here.
No, right. So we do that. Then you, we, if we, we go with that, we just have a quick little, um, the week following.
We could, yes.
Just to make a vote.
The thing is, you know, let's say, do it, let's plan on, uh, seventeenth, whether we will take a vote or not.
Yes.
So why do we have to assume all of those things in, uh, today?
All right. So I'm going to add a third little piece of homework here, which is All right, so I'm gonna add a third little piece of homework here, which is gonna be, I want to send the draft.
After Judy cleans it up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Once, once Judy cleans it up to.
But you'll send us.
Town council.
Before you send it to town council, you'll send a copy.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna try and get their input either at or before that June's, uh, July seventeenth meeting.
Please, before.
I mean, may, maybe I, we can get town council to actually appear at the meeting. I, I would actually like.
That would even be better.
You know?
Ask him to come. Don't ask him, just tell him, please be here.
I would like that. The only issue that I have is cost. If, 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 um, if now town is paying for this, that's town's money, so.
It, it costs more to have them show up at the hearing than it does to get their, um, usually anyway. I mean, I don't know what agreement you have with your town council, but.
Yep.
We're still in fiscal year twenty-five.
So my, my only thing is, you know, why do we have to pay? The town has to pay for something, you know? And also, you know, zoning board, we, it has to come from the ZBA money.
Yeah.
I don't know how much it will cost, how much money we need to pay. When you come out of the, um, the, the. No, it has to come from the ZBA. If we have no money in ZBA, then we have to, you remember that, we have to go to the select board to ask our money. Then they will ask in a way, what happened to this money? You spent it on some project, you know, Tom Johnson's thing.
All right, so we have a plan.
All right, so we need to ask them for an extension, right, for the July seventeen?
If, if, if that's what, and if you're comfortable with signing that, and, and, I've gotta get one to you too, cause.
That's fine.
You just make a note to make that little draft.
Thank you. Four pieces of homework tonight.
For Chris. Yeah, just so we have that, whatever needs to be signed.
Mullen Rule. Okay. Now. Trying to think if there's anything else. See, I see, we, we, we haven't even touched the waiver list. Um, and we haven't touched, uh, the fee waiver request tonight that we said that, that we wanted to talk about.
Well, we'll have to do that on the seventeenth.
Do you wanna have that discussion now?
Seventeenth.
Well, Nate's not gonna be here, so I don't know if he has comments on either of those things.
Yeah, I did, I do have one comment about it. I thought we were, if, were we not looking at what, some of the cost? I thought we were gonna look into costs.
I, I, so I, I did that. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. So given, um, and again, this is, this is an approximation, because from when we start, when we opened this public hearing until now, there was one other totally unrelated, uh, petition and hearing that we heard, okay? So I looked at the total expenses, um, in terms of publication of public notices, in terms of Toby's time, all of that stuff together. When you, when you add all of that together, um, uh, but then you account for that, this other totally unrelated, uh, public hearing, and so I'm removing a little bit, uh, from that amount. But then you also include, we're not done yet, so there's still gonna be more minutes that need to come out in July and August that, that, that relate to this, right? And we wanna make sure that we're covering those costs as well. So based on that and my review of, of what had been charged to date as it relates to this hearing. Uh, I think that number is gonna be in the range of, uh, four to five K in total. Now, just to refresh everybody's memory, according to the, the regulation, the general admission and process fee, which, which they've asked if, uh, uh, for it to be waived. And, and that's their right. It says in the regs, they could, they can ask for that waiver. The total thing, given, uh, the number of units, is seventeen thousand. So the total expense, I think, that the town is out for this is somewhere between four and five, give or take, you know, seeing how long, um, it takes to do the minutes in the future, but we'll see. Um, but so my guess would be, we could consider somewhere between the five and say, and the, the full amount, which would be seventeen K. Does that make sense?
It does.
That, that's where I netted.
But let me ask a quick question, and I'm just asking, is now we, the cost about the lawyer?
Yes.
Obviously, that is a fee.
Yes.
That this could occur, right? If we have to pay for that.
On top of that.
Would that, because this, this other one was different that we can't ask for, but could that be with that, with that fee? Did, did, did my question come?
Yeah, you're, that's a really good question.
Like, could that be, just say, cause that's part of that, that whole fee.
If they are not paying, we have to pay for it, right?
No, understood. I'm just, so my question to the board is.
Really good question.
Is that fee can be added, well, obviously, I know they're looking for something, but we have to look at that number as well, do we not? Whatever.
No, I think you're right. As I.
But I, I don't know if that's, is it against rules or regs or what? So I'm asking.
I, I think it's a great question. I think it's a great question.
Just like Raj says, I don't want the town to be out any money.
And, and this goes to, you know, the, the question that we had raised earlier of, i- is it sort of, is it allowed under, under state law for us to use any of these fees towards, towards legal?
That's my question as well. I don't wanna.
Yeah, again, this money goes to the town, right? On the zoning board account and, uh.
Right, that's correct.
Goes to zoning board account. You, you can use it anywhere you want.
Yeah, we should need it. So not only that, it just like we paid for the, for, um, Sam, uh, Weston and Sampson, okay, right?
That's a separate.
Yeah, that was a technical.
Yeah, not.
That's a separate account. That fifty thousand we paid is that fifty-three G account.
Exactly.
Uh-huh.
That's right.
Right, and this is, this, this fee is different. Right, so.
Different fee.
So we can't, that, 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 that one you can't touch, cause, uh, she already said in the rules, the regs, you have, it has to be used for X. But my question for this one, can we, obviously, we can take our whole cost, cause this is where our money for this.
This is the same, this is the same bundle of money that we paid Toby for.
That's right. So just making sure nothing comes, I mean, I know what they're asking for, but I think we have to look at all the costs.
Right, right.
Before we can say.
Right.
Yes, no to any kind of, uh, break on it.
Cause we don't wanna screw ourselves.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and one thing, again, I wanna raise it again, is your contract with your municipal attorney, if we weren't here, you'd be paying them to review your decisions anyway, probably as a, and, and again, I don't know what your contract says.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Yeah, that's.
This town doesn't, hasn't, I mean, they don't have a practice. I mean, generally, when we write a decision, it doesn't get reviewed by, by legal at all. And in the past, when we have done that, I, I, I know there's been a cost to the town for doing so on an hourly basis. That, I mean, at least that's what past town administrators have, have told me, so.
Cause we write good decisions.
So I, I think we just still have to kinda look at that whole, I don't know if we can answer that question.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Yeah, that's part of the piece of homework.
You know, I think we still have, and, and again, are we gonna be finished? Like, are we gonna be finished by the seventeenth, or is that our, our end?
I can't think of a reason why not, so long as we get answers to these two or three questions here.
Okay, when, when, when do you start your vacation, seriously? I'm just, I'm just curious.
It's on a open meeting.
That's a little, uh.
It's on a TV.
Familiar.
No, because we're talking about scheduling meetings and stuff, so that's why I'm asking. It's, it's a legitimate question.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, okay?
All right.
So how about, how about this July second, which is next Wednesday? We have a meeting to discuss these things. You know, the fees. And ho- hopefully you'll have some answers for the, the questions that we had, the homework questions?
Looking up the North Main Street.
And then the seventeenth, we come back, okay, and we make a decision on whether we wanna close the public hearing or not. And if we decide, you know, if the four of us, hopefully Mr. Benson will be here, if the four of us decide that we wanna close the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing. By that time, we'll have a response back from, from town council on the, on the, uh, on the, uh, the comprehensive permit, okay?
And, and just to add to that would be, find out when they do that same thing about what the cost is. They're gonna give you a decision, can you get a cost of that?
Right.
It's a twofold question, right? So then you can know the cost of the fee.
Right.
Does, does that make sense, Chris?
I think so.
Right? You're, you're asking them about what's going on, but then we need to know exactly what they're charging the town for that.
Right, exactly.
If, if, if it's not included in our, what we already pay.
Right, so the second, we could do the fees, you know, just get all the fees all taken care of, then the seventeenth, come back. Hopefully, town council will send back that we, we can discuss that, we can discuss the fee, and then the four of us can decide on whether we wanna close the public hearing or not. And then if we decide to close the public hearing, we close the public hearing, then when Nate comes back, we'll have another meeting, and then we have forty days to discuss. And then decide on when we're gonna make a decision. And then you can write the, you can write up, or we'll have the, we can sign the, the comprehensive permit. And then it'll go to, to town clerk for the twenty-one day of, um, right refusal. In case anybody wants to object to it. Does that sound right?
So you're suggesting two more sessions, July second and July seventeenth?
Right.
And, and again, that, that added July second session, that would be just to get answers to these.
Right, and talk about the fees.
Yeah.
On whether we're going to waive them or not.
Yeah.
And that way Nate will be here, so hopefully Nate, Nate, Nate will be here, and hopefully Mr. Benson will be here. So we'll have all, we'll have a full board to discuss all the fees. Does that, I mean, it's up to the rest of the board. It's not, I'm just making a suggestion, it's up to the rest of the board on how they feel.
What does the rest of the board feel?
Taking, took a lot of time out of us, Dave.
Huh?
No, I think.
No, I, I'm, I'm looking out for your, for, you know, for your interest too. I want, I want you to be part of the, the decision. You're here for this, for this, for this hearing. I wanna make sure that you're here.
Making a joke. Um, that's fine. I'm, I'm okay with, if Raj is okay, you're okay.
What do you think?
July second?
What's that?
July second.
Raj has had three meetings that night. That's, uh.
Next Wednesday.
Don't you think that's the select?
Uh, no, no, you don't have a meeting until the, the, um, what is it, July something? I'm, I'm just asking a question. I'm trying to make things easy, you know?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
But Chris, would you, would, does that give you?
Enough time.
Time to get all that?
It's a little over a week.
Which, but, did, how long would it take for the, uh, for Judy to get you the, cause she has to look at her review? Then send that to you, for you to send it to the lawyers.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I don't want, I, that, that document doesn't have to be back for the second of July. That can be back for the July, July seventeenth.
Well, no, because Chris would need to know what the cost of that was to talk about on Tuesday, or Wednesday, sorry, right?
No, that's, that cost will be taken care of on the seventeenth. I'm talking about all the other waivers that they're looking for and the other costs.
No, but we, we wanted to know all costs.
Okay.
Before we talk, we, I think our question was to talk about the whole cost. Well, we're, we're looking at the cost of the project for every aspect.
Yeah.
Are, are we not?
Or maybe he can call, maybe he can call and talk to, to whoever, Cap, Caroline, or one of the attorneys. I don't even know who our attorney is anymore. It, they changed so much, you know, so I don't even know who it is anymore.
I think, you know, you may need more time than a July second of this.
It, it's up to you. It's like you said, it's up to the board and what you wanna do. I'm just trying to make things easy.
It's possible we could get answers to these by the second, but I, I can't guarantee it.
I'd say. That's how I feel.
That's, that's kinda where I am. I think it's, it's not unreasonable, but it's also, it's not a slam dunk.
But he will be okay with, you know, seventeenth, the other board makes a decision on the fee, right? Will he be okay if the other board member makes that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I encourage you guys, if you, if it's, yeah.
It's a fee.
If I'm not involved.
Okay.
It's up to, it's really, Chris, it's totally up to you.
The only reason I'm ma, the only, the other reason I made the suggestion is, we have two other public hearings on the seventeenth besides this, this one.
Yeah, you don't wanna get.
So now you're talking about three public hearings.
You don't wanna get balled down.
And we're gonna be talking about the fees for this, for this public hearing.
Yeah.
So that's a lot to put on us, unless we decide to change the time and, and do this at five or six o'clock at night instead of at seven o'clock. Because with three public hearings plus what this year is gonna take us to like eleven or twelve o'clock at night. So that, that's why I'm trying to, you know, so it's, you know.
Could, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Maybe I can simplify things. If you guys think it's possible, one is on the fees, I think we can talk about those now, because you already know what a fixed amount is.
Yeah.
Um, and I know there was broad discussion among the board at the last public hearing about, well, if we cover our fees, would you be, you asked if we'd be comfortable with that? And we said, yes, if you don't have to charge us all of it, you don't have to charge us all of it.
Yeah.
And I know there's a balance left on our fifty thousand dollar fee.
Yes.
So if it's within that, to us, it's probably a wash. We wouldn't wanna delay anything.
Yeah.
Um, because the cost would be greater. It'd be stupid to delay it and to fight about it. We wanna fight with the town. We love this town.
Yeah.
So, um, that I think we can resolve tonight. Um, and when you talk about the fee that the attorney's gonna charge you for looking at this conditional decision, you can't do it. So I would be careful about discussing it that way, because that's, as, as Ms. Barrett advised you.
Was, but if I can just, I thought that was on, Judy, wasn't that on, that was a different fee, right? Wasn't that rules and regulations on?
That technical review.
The fifty-three G account.
Well, I'm sorry?
I was referring to the peer review fund. Yes, the fifty-three G account.
But now the fee.
The state regulations are very clear that you cannot use that money for legal fees.
Right, but now aren't these different, aren't these different fees?
Under our regs.
Yeah, administrative fees are different.
It's reviewing the, your decision, which is part of the process. Now, I'll, I'll defer to your forty B expert.
The state regulations are very clear. You cannot use the fifty-three G account, which is intended for consultant review of the application, to pay for, for legal representation, legal fees. It's, I mean, I'm, I don't need to do this anymore. I'm just telling you that's what it says.
Yep. So, so, but that, that, so the question that Nate's asking, that doesn't necessarily have a bearing on the filing and administration fee that a board requires for a comprehensive permit.
I think we.
Those are different fees.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I'm not, I, I know what you said, so these are, it's not what I was saying in your fees. So it's, it's different, two different fees.
That's the way our regs describe it.
So you wouldn't say what I'm saying. I'm not.
I'm assuming our regs are legal.
Yes, I'm not talking about where.
I don't know that.
Those fee are on the G, I'm sorry, what was the account?
The fifty-three G.
Yes, so I'm not referring to that.
Well, I'm saying is you're re-characterizing it so you can put it into the other fee, but it's the same thing.
And that's fine, but I, I think we could also say, well, we.
That's why I'm saying is like.
We can't do anything.
We don't, we probably can avoid that discussion for the record, like, we don't, I don't think we wanna imply that that's what you're doing. I think we can agree on what the technical fees are now.
Yes.
And if you wanna cover yourself, I mean, I think we can do that. And that way, you, you know the town's protected, we know we're gonna get that resolved.
Yep.
And then maybe on July second, we, you could vote, if you're comfortable with having had a chance to read this. Um, and much of it is, a lot of it's specific, like you've got jurisdictional findings, some of the things that got brought up in the, in the, um, hearing before about whether you had enough landmass, that stuff is particular to this, and I think, uh, this was a nice job drafting it, because it's very definitive. Um, and then a lot of the waivers are, and, correct me if I'm wrong, are incorporated in this, because they came from a lot of the peer review. Um, and a lot of your requirements, I, I mean, go through a bunch of things we just need to do for the town that we're gonna do anyway, where we won't get building permits. So I think the review of this is not gonna be as arduous, particularly after Ms. Barrett, uh, makes her revisions, which we discussed already. So they're not gonna be a surprise, second, they're gonna make it shorter.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm thinking if we can get agreement on the fees tonight, perhaps you could vote on July second, when you know you're gonna have a quorum. And then we can take that weight off of the July seventeenth meeting.
So the.
If you think you can, you have the time.
Yeah, so the, the rea, the only reason I'm hesitating is because what we had talked about before, about trying to also add legal review before that seventeenth, which would mean legal review before the second now.
Well, you can have the legal review after your vote.
I think.
I know, but I don't know if these folks are comfortable with that.
Uh, I think, you know, we are going circling, settling. It's been two hours.
Yes.
So let's put it back to the seventeenth. Let's make all this thing clean up before then. You, you will have a lot of time.
Yeah.
To clean up all these things by sending it to the town council and, uh, just do it on the seventeenth. Even if you want to have one more hour, that would be much more comfortable for me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, let me make sure that I'm, they can.
We can talk the entire night here.
No, I, I agree, I agree. So ju, just a, just a couple of things, just to make sure that all the homework is getting done, that needs to get done. We're gonna get a copy of the, uh, permit from North Main Street, take a look at the language around working hours and noise.
That's right.
Toby, can you send us one of the copies too, for the entire board? Ninety-four North Main Street. I may have it. I have, I have to dig through some.
I think, I think I may have a copy of it myself.
Toby has it.
And also, we can look at the site plan review language that's, that's commonly in there.
No, we just for the compare.
Just to know.
We can always go to the registry of deed too.
Yeah, we, we can get it, it's not an issue. And then this, this legal cost issue, it's two, sort of two-pronged. One is, are these, um, legal review, can that in any way, um, be covered, um, under these, these fees? Uh, we, we know now that we can't do it under fifty-three G.
That's right.
Can we do it under this administrative fee, or does the town just have to come up with that and then that's just the end of it legally? And then if the town, i- i- if, if we can appropriately include that in our calculation of this, this fee waiver request, what might that, you know, amount be, so that we can add that into sort of the hard costs to the town for the purposes of this hearing? Fair enough?
Fair.
And then.
Chris?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When someone pays the administrative fee, the filing fee?
Yes.
Does that money go into a revolving fund, or is it go, just go to the general fund? What happens to that money?
We have a ZBA.
It's a ZBA fund, so it's a, like a.
So evolving fund?
It's, it, yeah.
So the thing is, you know, not what, the ZBA funds are, we keep, keep it. This hearing, if somebody is paying, but some of the hearings, you know, we don't get paid that much money, right? So say suppose it comes to.
Three hundred dollars or whatever.
As a city apartment, it may be having a two, three meetings, the only one fee is like a three hundred dollars.
Yes.
So we have to pay for the Toby, that money has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's the reason, you know, we do need the fees.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not questioning that you need the fees. I'm trying to understand from an accounting mechanism, what happens when someone writes out a check?
Yeah.
For an app, I'm filing an application, here's my filing fee.
We have a ZBA, ZBA fund as well as planning board, all other, uh, things, you know, committees and boards, they have their own.
Revolving fund. Revolving fund?
Yes.
Like a revolving fund?
Yeah, so that's the question you're asking. Is it a revolving fund?
I'm just trying to figure out what the accounting mechanism is, that's all.
And I just, I wanna raise again, a, a vote in the actual decision, two different things.
Yeah.
You can vote in the final decision, you have forty days. The attorney may not get back to you by the seventeenth with, with things. And, and that, that's, you know, having done this a bunch of times and having practiced law and done this thing.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just worry that you're getting hung up on getting the attorney to read the decision. They can read it, you can change it as much as you want.
Yeah.
Before you file it, you have, i- in those forty days. Um, you can vote basi- uh, obviously, if you wanna get more, ask more questions, that's this and that, that's different.
Yeah.
That's for your information.
Yeah.
But I would separate the, I wouldn't wait for the lawyer to review this, because you may wait. You may run, the clock might run out. Um, you should vote when you're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regardless, independent of that.
I think that's.
I, that's how I always see it done. I mean, the board votes, and, you know, the nice thing about this process, as several others I've been involved in. Is at least there's an ability to talk to the applicant about the conditions, cause that's really the most important piece, I think, to you guys. It's, yes, it's an approval, but I can live with these conditions.
Yeah.
So having had that discussion, you know, usually town council. Uh, unless town council's been at every hearing, I mean, I've seen some like that, where there've been, it's been very contentious from the outset. And town council's there and writes the decision, but it's not always like that. Um, and in any case, the decision, you know, is not necessarily gonna be written before the board closes the hearing. I'm involved with one right now in another community, where the decision was just crafted within the last few days by town council. Uh, for a matter that the board closed a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and so I, I would, I would just say this, I would, so I would characterize the July seventeenth meeting, now that we're contemplating as this. It would be a nice to have, but not a need to have, to have feedback from town council for that meeting. And I would, I would expect in any events that we would close the public hearing on that evening of the seventeenth. Uh, sans, uh, uh, Mr. Orsiani. But, but yet he would still be available for, for voting within that forty-day period. Once we did get review from, from, from town council. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Other questions? So, so where did we land? Do we?
Motion to continue.
To when?
Seventeenth.
So do we need, we need, uh, we need something from now, right?
We need actually something written. Uh, I, I, I assume email is, is okay. Uh, if you could just send a one-sentence email saying that you agree to extending the public hearing to July seventeenth.
I really don't want to make it rush it and then make it error mistakes and that. I don't want that, I don't want to put the town.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm always distance of the town.
Yeah.
I don't want to put the town into jeopardy. That's all.
Okay.
No, I think that's why.
You want, you want to say I'm comfortable, I'm ready to.
No, I think that's why we're here, right? We're here for the town, right?
Exactly.
Exactly.
And I will read.
Don't rush me.
Don't worry.
Yes.
And I will read the, I will try and keep that July seventeenth, cause like, to your point, we're gonna have three hearings, as efficient.
Well, can I just make one suggestion?
Okay.
Instead of holding our meeting, starting our meeting at seven, would it be possible just to do it at six o'clock?
Yeah.
That's up to board members.
No, well, he's not gonna be here, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna let you.
But I mean, I don't know.
I think it also depends to make sure that the.
The applicants.
Can get there as well.
Judy.
Judy.
Uh, actually, well, Judy, uh, cause we could change the time, because we've got three hearings. It could be the first one, it could be the last one.
Which date is this, the second or the seventeenth?
July, July seventeenth. It's a Thursday. Are you available even?
Yeah, really.
Should we even be talking about this?
So, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I've got. I, I may be able to join remotely. Um, it might be good, Chris, if you and I have a conversation before that meeting.
Sure.
Um, I'm gonna, I've penciled it in. I just don't know if I can actually join.
Okay, okay. Um, a- and I'm thinking about this, I mean, once we have sort of the draft. And maybe we get something from town council, maybe we don't. I still feel like we probably have what we need, at least to close the hearing. I mean, we don't have to make a decision that night, uh, but we would still, I think.
The other, the other, other than the two that we have from Mr. Pro- Prunker.
Yeah.
The other one, do we have an idea? Is it gonna be something, is it something gonna be quick, or is it something gonna be? Do you know, off the top of your head what it is? I mean, is it something that you can just tell us without discussing it, but something that you can?
I, I don't know who's gonna show up in terms of public comment. I, I, I can't predict that unfortunately. Um, all we can do is our best.
Because I know two of them are Mr. Brancas.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so Raj, to your point, it's getting late enough.
Motion to continue.
It's, uh.
Okay.
Well, so, let me just ask the applicants if they're available Tuesday on the seven, well, you, you guys already are, right?
We're already on, so we will be here, and I just sent you an email confirming that we consented to the extension to July.
Thank you.
So I will, I haven't decided yet what time or what date, or, I mean, what time that date is gonna be, which hearing is when.
We can put it at the first thing, first thing. Oh, we don't know, six o'clock.
If we start at six, I just don't know if John Benson, for example, is available at six o'clock as opposed to seven.
Well, you know what?
So let me reach out to him first before we figure out timing.
Just tell him to be here at six o'clock.
And it, it might be, just a suggestion too, it might be either you, like, cause you've got two of them. Maybe back to back, or you do the other one. I don't know how quick the other one is.
Yeah.
No, even, you know, we can, even if you put six o'clock, we can always open and then continue at, uh, seven.
There'll be three of us.
Not some, we can always more.
Would you be available at six o'clock?
I, I will make sure I am.
On the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so that's an option. It's at least a live option. That's good to know. Alright, so. I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to continue.
Second.
And we're talking July seventeen.
July seventeen. Motion to continue until July seventeen.
Right now, we'll say six o'clock, I guess, which could be changed. Um, alright, we'll do a voice.
Toby, motion to continue until July seventeen, tentatively at six P M.
And I second it.
Dave seconded it. We'll do a voice vote. Dave, yes?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, it's four zero. The hearing is continued to July seventeen.
And there's no meeting on July second.
No meeting on July second.
I wanna make sure I wasn't supposed to be here.
Anything else?
Well, if you like, you can do that.
Thank you.
I spent enough time here today.
Mr. Chair, in, in the, uh, in an effort to save time on the seventeenth, if Mr. Femia comes up with some questions in the meantime. That I can answer, I'd be happy to answer.
He, he will be joining soon.
Okay. No, no, I think what he's saying, if he has questions prior.
Yeah.
Right, I think is what you're referring to.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, it's gonna be a.
So, we need a motion back then.
Hold on, do you?
We have a couple of things.
We have a couple of things that we have to.
Take care of, unfortunately.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Alright, so back, well, actually, let's do this one quick. So we have to sign this document, we do it every year for authorized signature. Uh, for, you know, to sign, where any one of us can sign the authority of the board. Just wanna put our signatures.
Just one person, or everyone signs it same?
We want everybody to sign saying that we all have.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's usually Dave.
I know, you, you're, you're here more than any of us, so.
Good at that. You're good at that.
Oh, Raj is here, is more than Chris and I. One of you two is more than me, or Dave.
Well, I usually sign Toby's time sheets, and I usually sign, like, any of the, uh, other stuff that Toby might have. All she has to do is text me or something, whatever. I'm still not happy, you know, if you wanna listen to me. I'm still not happy about the fact that we hit these things. Like, the morning of the meeting, you know?
I hear you.
And we don't have time to review it. And then they come to the meeting and they wanna change this and that and all of this. Instead of going over the whole thing.
So what do we have, uh, Z, which, what is that called right there?
This right here?
Yeah.
Authorized signatures for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
That's a miscellaneous mail and paperwork needed, signatures?
Yes.
Yeah, that goes to, um, to, um, what's her name, uh, Les?
Leslie.
Leslie. Now, when she knows that anything that comes from the ZBA, that any one of us, any of our.
No, that, no, I just, we also have a ZBA treasures report to look.
He's gonna sign that.
No, Raj already did.
Raj already did.
Yeah.
Alright, so we've got that, so.